Good evening and welcome to the April 24, 2017, meeting of the Florissant City Council. I believe we have some scouts in the audience if you would like to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Please stand.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Shuldorff?
Here.
Hanke?
Here.
Vigano?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Sayam?
Lee?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes and executive meeting minutes of the April 10, 2017, meeting? Hearing none, Councilman Schmidt moves to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Caputa, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. Next, we will move to old business. Bill number 9274. Councilman Sayam moves for a second reading, seconded by... for discussion. All right. Thank you, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Sayam?
Thank you, Madam President. I would actually like to make a motion to suspend the rules if I could to... if the petitioner is present, maybe they would be willing to come up and discuss a few alternative options to the sign they had as... was depicted in our packet this past Friday.
Mr. Sayam moves to suspend the rules, seconded by Mr. Childress. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Please come up. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Stein. I'm a representative of the bank.
Good evening. Are you going to need the overhead?
Turn it on.
The top left.
I don't know. I've got what you have, but if you'd like...
There you go.
I know last time there were some questions about the location of the sign because of the picture that we had taken, and the picture did not accurately show the location, it was more to show the type of sign. So we had our architect draw. I know there was a question about how far... where the 40-foot lot... 40-foot mark from the center of New Halls Ferry was, so we submitted this document that's on the screen now that shows that 40-foot mark, and that is the... this hashtag line. And where we would propose to put the sign is actually another 17 feet past that 40-foot mark. I'm sorry, yeah, 17 feet past that, and then the... it's seven foot from our actual property line. So if you look at this area... this area here, this is that grass area that last time we were here showed, and that's where the picture of the sign was. That's not where we're going to put the sign. We're actually putting this... we'd like to put the sign seven feet from that grassy area, in a new grassy area that we're going to install.
This shows more accurately.
Yeah. Yeah, this shows more accurately where the sign would be located, and you can see the grassy area here, the existing one, right here, and our sign is actually seven foot back from that is where we'd like to put it. So it would be about 56 and a half feet from the center line of New Halls Ferry.
Mr. Sayam?
Okay, thank you. So I guess what I wanted to ask is if you would be open to a few other alternative options to that, such as putting it on... if you can go back to that layout of the property on the other... yeah, that...
Yes.
Okay. If you would be open to perhaps putting it on the left side of the property, maybe expanding that grassy area on the left to the parking space above the eight, and maybe putting the parking... maybe putting the sign up there?
Right.
Or maybe on the... yeah, but on... expanding it so it would go up a couple of parking spaces and then putting the sign up there? Or on the right side of the property where there's a lot of grassy area, putting the sign in one of those places, but, you know, not such that it blocks the Steiger sign? Or if you could... if you would be willing to put it behind the 40-foot line, but like use a pole sign instead, would you be open to any one of those three options?
When you mean behind the 40-foot line, do you mean...
Closer to the building? Yeah, back there, but it would be a pole sign.
Yeah, we really want to avoid that because I think the sign... the problem we have is our building's not... I'm just taking... our building's not real big, and we don't want a sign that dwarfs our building. We just think it won't... it won't look... it won't look good. This may be an alternative. We wanted to stay away from that because we thought... we didn't know because there's a cross street there if that would cause a problem. I don't think this will work. We've looked at it and talked with our architect. The reason is because of these utility easements there. We would just lose a lot of parking spaces with having to move everything around there. This might work. We would lose a couple of parking spaces, but those two probably aren't real valuable parking spaces where they're located.
There's a six-foot berm right here.
Yes, there's a huge berm right here, and again, we've got the Steiger sign to worry about blocking them.
Yeah, we wouldn't want you to block that, but we were wondering if there was like a possibility of like any location over there that wouldn't block that.
Right. I really think... we talked with our architect. I think this is just going to be really difficult to work with the easement... utility easement with this big berm here and with their sign. That one we may be able to work with. I mean, we would obviously prefer it here, but we're at your mercy, so we do what you ask, kind of.
Yeah, it's just too close. Where you have it now is just too close to the street. It's not far enough back, you know?
Okay. So you would propose alternatively maybe putting it where these two parking spaces are here?
It would be better, definitely, yeah.
I mean, I think that would be... if those are... I mean, if you're saying we aren't going to get that, then we could live with that as opposed to putting a big sign here, and I don't... just don't think it's going to work over here, so that would be a way that would possibly work. And I know when here you mean not on this green space, but on these two parking spots here.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I... if you're open to that, I kind of suggested that earlier this evening to a couple of council members that I would be real... I know you lose a couple of parking spaces, but as a bank, I don't think you have a big... where two spaces are really going to cost you that much. I agree, but I think if you could do that... you're still not going to get the 40-foot setback, but you're going to get further away from the street by 10, 12 feet, you know? Even if you can push it back a little bit. I don't... it'll be far enough back that it'll be out of the sightline of the Cross Keys Drive of people coming out of there to make a right or a left turn. It'll be far enough back that it won't be in their sightline. The other side would be ideal, but again, the problem... I went and looked at the property. There's a berm, and you do have the Steiger sign, which is right there, so you'd have to be in front of the Steiger sign, but then the berm would be... it would be complicated to put it there.
Yeah.
And then obviously, the only other option would be to get rid of the monument sign together... altogether, and go with a pole sign, which then you could pretty much locate almost anywhere, because then you've just got a pile on to work with, so... but I... if you think you can work with taking out the two car spaces and do it over there, I'd be all for it, and I'm... so what would... what we could do, if we just kill this bill, which we really don't want to do, that would put you and have to go all the way back to the very beginning.
Right.
Okay, we don't want to do that. What we can do is postpone this bill, give you the opportunity to reconfigure this, come back again in two weeks, and then do it... and then we can get the bill passed at that point in time. And I don't think this really sets you back at all. It's not holding up anything, I'm sure.
No.
Couple more weeks is not going to hurt you that bad, I don't think.
We had a closing scheduled for tomorrow night that we postponed, but we can postpone it. Like you said...
Yeah, I mean, you're not ready to...
We're not breaking ground.
...shovel and dirt tomorrow, so this isn't going to hurt you.
Correct.
But if you could do that, I think the council would be very appreciative of it, just to get it a little further away from the street. We're just concerned at that seven foot off that property line and that close to the... I don't know. It just... so if you could do that, I think that would be great for all purposes and all the way around.
I think we can do that. I obviously want to talk to our architect.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
But if... I like your suggestion of postponing it tonight, coming back in two weeks and seeing what we've got.
That's fine. That's perfect.
Mr. Hassel?
What you would need to do is submit an amended site plan, identifying the location on the amended site plan, and then we'll insert that into Section 1 of the ordinance.
Okay.
If you can get that to the city clerk prior to the next meeting, then we can make that language amendment, so we can do it through a substitute bill or amendment on the floor.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right. Do you need to make a motion to post...
Yeah.
To continue?
Yes.
Mr. Sayam makes a motion to continue, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
It's May 9th.
It is May 9th. The meeting will be May 9th.
May 9th? Okay.
Tuesday.
At 7:30?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We will move to bill number 9275. I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa, discussion. All in favor? Aye opposed?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $353,770 from the Capital Improvement Fund to account number 035032000, debt service, and appropriation of $338,310 from the Park Improvement Fund to account number 095092000, debt service, to provide funding for the principal and interest payments for the special obligation bonds.
Councilman Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye opposed?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $353,770 from the Capital Improvement Fund to account number 035032000, debt service, and an appropriation of $338,310 from the Park Improvement Fund to account number 095092000, debt service, to provide funding for the principal and interest payments for the special obligation bonds.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes.
Vigano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Bill number 9275 passes and becomes ordinance number 8313.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Mark Schmidt for his 21 years of service as a council representative from Ward 8.
Councilman Childress moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Hanke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Mark Schmidt for his 21 years of service as a council representative from Ward 8.
I will move for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Clerk, please call the roll.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes.
Vigano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Mark Schmidt for his 21 years of service as a council representative from Ward 8. Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? We'll do those in just a minute, okay? Hearing no further comments. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes.
Vigano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Resolution number 996 passes. So right now, we as a council are going to walk down and present Mark with his resolution.
Resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Mark Schmidt for his 21 years of service as a council representative from Ward 8. Whereas Mark Schmidt has lived in the city of Florissant since 1982, he and his wife Peggy have four daughters, Erin, Katie, Emily, and Carrie, and five grandchildren. Whereas Mark was first elected as councilman in 1996 and served four terms as council president, two terms as council vice president. Whereas Mark is a member of St. Rose, Philippine de Shane... decline. Hang on. As a member of the Knights of Columbus Council 2951, whereas Mark was an advocate for promoting economic development and played a large role in Cross Keys redevelopment project. Whereas Mark consistently promoted fiscal responsibility, working with the administration during the budget process, and encouraged transparency and strategic spending. Whereas Mark supported efforts to preserve property values and increase safety initiatives. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Florissant, speaking for itself and on behalf of the cities... citizens of the city of Florissant, congratulate Councilman Mark Schmidt for his 21 years of dedicated service and wish him the great success in the future.
But wait, there's more. So, Tim, you want to come up? There's more that would like to congratulate you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. At this time, I would request that the clerk would read these three proclamations, one from the Missouri Senate, the House, and county councilman Steve Stanger.
You might as well sit down for a minute. Proclamation, St. Louis County, Missouri. Whereas Mark Schmidt was elected in the Florissant City Council in April 1996 and has served honorably for 21 years, and he will attend his first... his final meeting as councilman on April 24, 2017. Whereas Mark's influence in the city is evident as he was instrumental in the passage of legislation that significantly improved the city of Florissant, including his efforts with the Cross Keys Shopping Center. Whereas due to his diligence and hard work, many city buildings were added, updated, and renovated, including the Florissant Civic Center government building and government building. Whereas for 27 years, Mark has been a proud member of the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 562. Whereas Peggy and his wife of 36 years raised four daughters, Erin Brousse, Katie Gardner, Emily Hollingshead, and Carrie Schmidt, and he is a proud grandfather of five. Now therefore, I, Stephen Stanger, St. Louis County Executive, congratulate Mark on the occasion of his retirement after a long and distinguished career as a Florissant City Councilman, and do hereby proclaim April 24, 2017, as Mark Schmidt Day in the St. Louis County, Missouri, and on behalf of the cities... citizens of St. Louis County, wish Mark the best in all his future endeavors. I'm not sure about this one. Okay. This one, I can't even see. Okay. Missouri House of Representatives Resolution. I can be able to see it. Whereas it is with special pleasure that the members of the Missouri House of Representatives pause to recognize an outstanding Missouri citizen that has distinguished himself through many years of excellent service to local... to its local community. And whereas Mark Schmidt of Florissant, Missouri, is being honored as an outstanding Missourian who has dedicated 21 years of service as a councilman for the city of Florissant and citizen of Ward 8. Whereas Mark Schmidt is currently the longest-serving member, councilman, having served on the council under three different mayors with numerous council members. Whereas during his time as councilman, Mark Schmidt has been very active supporting labor and first responders. Whereas in addition to serving the council, Mark Schmidt has been... has been 27-year member of the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 562, a 28-year member of the North County Labor Club, parishioner of St. Rose, Philippine de Shane, and an active member of the Men's Club Athletics and fish fry member of the Knights of Columbus. And whereas Mark Schmidt has accomplished all of this and more with the help of his loving partner and devoted wife, Peggy Schmidt, their four daughters, Erin Brousse, Katie Gardner, Emily Hollingshead, and Carrie Schmidt, and five grandchildren, Emma Gardner, Aiden Brousse, Gavin Brousse, Noah Gardner, and Tyler Brousse. Now therefore, be it resolved that the member of the... members of the Florissant House of Representatives, Florissant, Missouri House of Representatives, 99th General Assembly, join in extending our utmost congratulations to Mark Schmidt and his... in this moment of final... of fine distinguishment. And be it further resolved that Chief Clerk of the Missouri House of Representatives be instructed to prepare a properly inscribed copy of this resolution for Mark Schmidt as a mark of our esteem for him. Okay. This is from the Senate, the state of Missouri. The glass is glaring. The members of Missouri Senate always become welcome, the opportunity to recognize show-me state residents who have proven exemplary citizens to be exemplary citizens through the time and energy expended in ensuring that local government provides its much-needed service and programs in the efficient, effective manner mandated by the public. Whereas Mark Schmidt of Florissant, Missouri, attained considerable distinction as a member of the Florissant City Council who represented individuals and institutions in Ward 8 in leadership, calling that he is now drawn to a close for 21 years of service. Whereas during his tenure in the city... on the city council, Mark Schmidt served with three different mayors. Whereas as a member of the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 562 for 27 years, Mark Schmidt additionally is a 28-year member of the North County Labor Club, a parishioner of St. Rose, Philippine de Shane Catholic Church, and a member of the Men's Club Athletics and Knights of Columbus. Whereas Mark Schmidt is justifiably proud as also to be known as the beloved husband of Peggy Schmidt and a loving father of Erin Brousse, Katie Gardner, Emily Hollingshead, and Carrie Schmidt, and a wonderful grandfather of Emma Gardner, Aiden Brousse, Gavin Brousse, and Noah Gardner, and Tyler Brousse. Whereas it is fitting and proper that the Missouri Senate should pause in its diverse legislative duties and responsibilities in order to acknowledge the milestone events in the lives of such outstanding Missouri citizens as Mark Schmidt. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Missouri Senate, 99th General Assembly, join to abloy the leadership and contribution so generously given by Mark Schmidt during his time in the war... as Ward 8 Councilman for the city of Florissant, to convey him this legislative body's most heartfelt wishes for continued success in the life and many more years to come. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Senate is instructed to prepare the properly inscribed copy of this resolution for presentation to Mark Schmidt of Florissant, Missouri.
We will now open it up for a few words from council. Why don't you want to just go one up? Mr. Lee?
Yeah, Mark, I just want to thank you for your service to the city, for our friendship over these years. We've not always agreed on every issue, but we agreed on most, and I think we've accomplished a whole lot together, and you're going to be missed on the council, and I wish you the best of luck.
Mark, I said something not too long ago, and I'm going to repeat it again, that it was nice to have somebody to go back and bounce things off of. You've been around quite a few years, and you've definitely gave me a lot of knowledge how things were done in the past, so you was always spot on. You sure got a good memory as far as how you guys put things together and who did it and why, so I appreciate that. It was nice serving with you, and you know, your parliamentary stuff always helped too. I think every one of us up here on that, so we appreciate it.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Madam President. Mark, it's been a joy serving with you, and I want to thank you for the mentoring you did for me the last five years that I've been on the council. As Mr. Jones said so well, you know the rules and you know how we were supposed to operate as a council, and so many times you would catch us on the little things. But more so than that, Mark, you're a good family man, and you're a very wise person, and I know that oftentimes, as I said to you tonight, you were the voice of reason in the back of the room. You weren't making the noise all the time, but you always had the wise and sage direction for us to go, and I appreciate that. Peggy and the girls, thank you for the time you've given to us, and I... we're going to give them back to you, and I know that the friendship we have will continue. I wish you and your best... you and the family the best. Thank you.
Mr. Caputa?
Yes, Mark. It's been an honor serving with you for the past five years, and you would truly be missed on this council seat, with a wealth of knowledge. Anytime we needed any information of how things, like Mr. Jones, Mr. Egan said, that anytime we needed anything, you were there and there to help the council and help us individuals, and you truly will be missed. Good luck, and hope to see you around. Thank you.
Mr. Childress?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, Mark, first met you many years ago at St. Thomas the Apostle, and we were members of the Men's Club and the Athletic Committee, and our kids... a lot of our kids grew up together, and we did a lot of events up at school. But I think I admire you most for being president during a really important time of our city when we were using a tiff for the first time at Cross Keys, and you really maneuvered the ship through some rough waters, but you were really good at it, and I admire you for that. And I'd like to thank Peggy and the entire Schmidt family for your patience in letting the city have Mark for such a long time. Mark, I'm going to miss you, and I'll be seeing you around for sure. Thank you.
Mr. Hanke?
Yeah, Mark. As a relatively new student, just now second term, I have to tell you thank you for the mentoring that you didn't even know you were doing. Sit back and watch you in the parliamentary procedures and how things... but most importantly, the help that you've given this council is immeasurable, but what you've done is represent citizens of Florissant and of your ward, and you've done an outstanding job at that. It's been an honor to serve with you as a seatmate here. Good luck with the grandkids and the kids and grandkids. Enjoy the hell out of that.
Mr. Sayam?
Thank you, Madam President. Mark, I just wanted to echo everybody else's thanks here in thanking you for your service and your friendship, and you know, like everybody else up here, I benefited from your wealth of knowledge and experience, I think, as everybody could plainly see, even in the occasion of the first call of the bill bank here. You helped us rise to the occasion in that regard, and you're going to be missed, just like everybody else here is saying, so thank you again, and I appreciate it.
Well, Mark, I have about 20 pieces of paper here of things that I wanted... that I wanted to say, but as you know, every once in a while, this train... about this train. I've known you for a long time, but I want to thank you for your experience and being my mentor, and anytime we had a problem, if I just would... when I sat in that chair, I could just lean back and say, where do I go from here?
And you always helped. You always, and even tonight, we saw you keep Robert's Rules of Order just write down and keep us all in check, you know, which is great. And I remember just coming to you with wanting to have a ward meeting, and you were the first one who jumped in to do it with me, just to help me to get my, you know, feet wet a little bit. And then when I brought up the picnic, I'm sorry, you again were one of the first ones, and Peggy and the girls jumped in to help me. And I remember, you know, people saying if we got 50 people, that was going to be a lot. And, you know, we got 500 and rain. But it was, it's just been wonderful working with you, and I thank you. I hope you continue to come. I thank Peggy, God knows what you're going to do on Monday nights now with them, but you know, she's welcome back anytime. But again, just thank you, and you've been great. So now I'm going to give it to two people who've served with you the longest. Mr. Hassel.
Thank you, Council President. And Mark, it has been a privilege and honor to work with you over the last 21 years. Your honesty, your integrity, your service to the city is second to none. I am eternally grateful for having spent the last two decades, if you can believe that, with you, both as an advisor, colleague, and most importantly, as a friend, which I cherish. I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that the courage that you exhibited when you battled your cancer is the same way that you exhibited courage in addressing the issues, the tough issues with the city. And we are all eternally grateful for the service that you provided to the city over all this period of time. And I personally thank you for having the privilege again to work with you.
Thank you. Mayor Schneider.
Well, Mark and Peggy, on behalf of my wife Rachel, we look forward to continuing our long friendship, and hopefully we'll do some more traveling together. We really enjoyed those days. Mark Schmidt has always been for progress, and Mark Schmidt has never been for drama. Mark, you have been a loyal friend to the city that you love and to your friends, and best wishes to you and your family.
You ready? There you go, Councilman Schmidt. It's all yours.
It's with a heavy heart that I'm spending my last few minutes as a councilman dressing this body. Been a councilman for 21 years, have attended hundreds of council meetings, an equal number of committee and work session meetings. I've handled countless constituent calls and voted thousands of times. I've enjoyed representing my constituents' interests on the council, protecting our neighborhoods, helping Florissant grow and prosper. So a few thank yous are in order. First thank you I have are to the residents of Ward Eight, past and present. As you know, my ward has changed three times since I've been on council. First after the 2000 census, after the 2010 census, and then again just last year. So I really appreciate the residents of Ward Eight that have supported me over the years. A lot of them are friends and colleagues, so I really want to thank them. The second thank you is to the Florissant employees. They're dedicated, they love this city as much as we do, and are there for our citizens. Special thanks to our administration and offices for all their help over the years that I've enjoyed with them. A special thanks to department heads that I've dealt with over the years, many of them far the 21 years I was on. And then all the way down to our part-time employees, who all share the same passion that they have for this city. A special thank you to our city clerk's office. We could not function as a council without Karen and Anita. They've helped us tremendously over the years. My next thank you goes out to my council members, past, and I can't even fathom the number that I've served with, it's probably around 30, all the way up to my present colleagues. Past council members and councils may not have always gotten along, we've always had differences, and I will admit that this council is one of the finest I've served on in my 21 years. Yes, we do have differences, but we also enjoy each other's company. We are able to socialize together. Our wives and husbands get together and are able to socialize. We've become very good friends over the years, and I know that will continue. My fourth and final thank you is to my family, especially my wife and my four daughters, who've allowed me to do this the last 21 years. I can remember my wife asking me every three years when this would come up, are you sure you want to do this again? And she always knew the answer. I enjoyed it. There are going to be a few things I am going to miss, as well as some of my family. And one big one is going to be the flowers. I've been in the parade 20 times out of my 21 years. I've missed it one year. My kids, my grandkids have all enjoyed that parade, so I will miss that. There are numerous other things that come up that also I will miss. But I'll leave you with this note. Florissance in a flux of change. The past 21 years, things have changed. I can remember going back to when I first got on council, in order to get a question out of City Hall, you had to send in a three-part memo sheet filled out, paper. You'd send it up to City, you'd send one copy up to City Hall, keep a copy. Hopefully in a couple of weeks, you'd get a response back, a written note on that same memo sheet. That's how we communicated back then. We've come a long way. It's much faster now with emails and our electronic communication. So just even that, the city is changing, and it will continue to change. I suggest to everyone, you embrace those changes. We accept them. They will happen. The city will constantly be in flux. There'll be challenges ahead for all of us, this council during budget time, the people with, also with the budget, with possible cuts that may have to happen. I'm not suggesting any at this time, and I'm not suggesting that there will be, but I know the challenges are there, and I know the challenges will be ahead. But I know this council will tackle those challenges and accept them and do the right I've also had the privilege of dealing with a number of things since I've been on council. One, and you've heard it repeatedly in most of the things I'm very proud of, is our Cross Keys development. And no one would ever guess that that was a contentious development at the time, that there were so many people that didn't want it to happen. Like I said, you can't, people cannot, it's hard to fathom in today's world that anybody would be against that project, seeing how beautiful that turned out and how beautiful it still is. As our crown jewel in the city, there were some firsts with that, and that was our first tiff in the city, which was a monumental task in itself of education for ourselves on this council to do that. I was president at the time when that was going through, and there were a couple of meetings that we went till midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning. Again, it's hard to fathom that anybody could really have been against that project, but we had them. And I was able to hold those five votes together to get that through and get that passed, because I don't know what it would be right now if that had not passed. Some of the other things, and maybe not as significant, but we've added many assets into this city. The purchase of the government center right next to us, our newly purchased building on Washington that's going to be our new courts building, our renovations of our civic centers, the pool at Bangor. All those things have enhanced the city of Florissant and enhanced the progress that we make and also our citizens. Another one I can't leave out, and it's hard to, but again, it's a contentious issue, but the golf course. At the time, we fought hard to make that golf course a reality. Again, it was five votes that got that golf course. And again, to this day, there's still people that are against it, but it's an amenity that can't be beat in this city. Go look at it today, and if you'd seen it 20 years ago, you wouldn't think it's the same golf course. So in closing, I thank you all, and wish the city a prosperous future. May God grant you all the courage to change the things that can and should be changed, the ability and willingness to accept the things that can't be changed, and the wisdom to know the difference. I thank you.
Next, we will have the swearing-in of the newly elected officials. Judge Dan Boyle will now swear in the newly elected council members. Ward Two, Timothy Jones. Ward Four, Jeff Caputa. Ward Six, Gerard Hanky. And Ward Eight, Robert Parsons Jr. Judge, you want to take that? Thank you.
(INAUDIBLE). 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 All right, Councilman Jones, if you'd raise your right hand, please. Do you, Timothy Jones, solemnly swear that you possess all the qualifications for the position of council member as prescribed by the Charter of the City of Florissant, that you will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the State of Missouri and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Florissant, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office? Councilman Caputa, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you, Jeffrey Caputa, solemnly swear that you possess all the qualifications for the position of council member as prescribed by the Charter of the City of Florissant, that you will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the State of Missouri and the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Florissant, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office?
I do.
(APPLAUSE). All right, sir, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you, Gerard Hanky, solemnly swear that you possess all the qualifications for the position of council member as prescribed by the Charter of the City of Florissant, that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the State of Missouri and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Florissant, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office? All right, sir, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you, Robert Parsons Jr., solemnly swear that you possess all the qualifications for the position of council member as prescribed by the Charter of the City of Florissant, that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and that the State of Missouri and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Florissant, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office?
I do.
We will now break for a short moment before we re-seat the council. So if you want to take pictures or anything like that, feel free to do it now. We are ready to resume if everyone would take their seat, please. The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda, for three minutes. Please remember, this is not a question-and-answer period, but if you would like to speak with one of us, we would be happy to stay after the meeting and do so.
Hello, my name is Rob Hoffman. I live at 306 St. Louis Street. Is it inappropriate to pass out a couple of photos to pass?
Sure. But when you speak, would you either hold the microphone or just speak closer to it?
It's coincidental that Mr. Schmitz, the first thing he said when he was giving his discussion was that he valued, I think, protecting the residents. He said that. And that was like, I noticed that's the first thing, it's coincidentally, that's why I'm here. I'm asking for the city council to help protect us, myself and other residents in my vicinity that are being impacted, I guess we can say. What you're looking at is a fence that's an antique wrought iron fence, 19th century. And it got in the shape that you're seeing it because a fellow left Bunkers Bar, got into his truck at closing on Thursday night, and we woke up and found the fence like this. He turned up the street, made a right on St. Louis Street, and careened into the fence. The reason I know this is a fact and it's not an allegation is because he has a conscience and about 10 or 11 o'clock the next morning, he actually came to my house and told me what happened. And he's making amends, and I think that was a great thing, that he would do such a thing. But what we have here is an incident involving this bar. And it's, if you haven't been aware of this, and it's hard to believe you haven't, that we do have conflicts with the bar, the residents locally, none of whom you are close to that bar. So perhaps you don't quite understand the magnitude of various things like noise, damage to property such as occurred here. But I'm asking the city council, we repeatedly called the police and nothing seems to ever get done. I don't know that they ever show up when there's noise going on. But there are actually laws on the books. There's one law in Missouri, if you want to look it up, it's statute 537.053. It's called a dram shop law. I don't know if you're familiar with what that is, but it basically, those who serve and provide intoxicants, just to paraphrase, may be culpable or complicit in the crimes committed by their intoxicated patrons. And if you go back to the last four or five years, you might find some very amazing lawsuits in the multi-millions of dollars levied at bartenders who served people who went out and killed people driving in their car. So, two things here. You might say that any individual such as a bar owner does have the right to serve intoxicants and make money doing that, but I think that that right should be delimited in the cases where the residents are impinged on being able to live a tranquil and safe coexistence, as well as if you can see that it's complicit, such as the laws that I just mentioned, in illegal activities such as disturbance of the peace, violation of noise ordinances, and most important, drunk driving.
Thank you, Judge Hoffman.
And the effects of DWI as well.
Thank you.
So I'll just kind of leave you with all of that, and I'm going to draft up a memo. This just happened. I'll send it to your email with some suggestions as how I think that you guys might be able to help the few residents that are in that immediate part of the neighborhood.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Please state your name and address.
My name's Carl Morgan. I'm a resident of Ward six. Rob touched on part of my problem. I live about a block and a half from Bunkers. And Friday and Saturday nights during the summer when it's not raining, it's not Bunkers itself I have a problem with, it's some of his customers, and they're Harley riders. And between 11:00 and close on any Friday and Saturday that it's nice, they'll come out ones and twos and they'll crank their Harleys up. And you can't drive a Harley without wrapping it five or six times at full throttle. That gets the carburetors going, they smooth out. What I didn't know is you got to drive it at full throttle for a half a mile before you slow down. And that, it's just like being inside of a bass drum for two minutes, three minutes. If you pull up next to one of these Harleys at a stoplight, it will rattle your car windows at idle. So you know what I'm talking about at full throttle. And it started in February this year because of the nice weather, and it's going to go all the way on through till November probably if we don't do something about it. We have noise abatement laws on the books. We need to start enforcing this stuff. We need to get people down there. We know when it's happening. Just send a policeman through every once in a while, anything. Talk to them. Tell Bunkers to talk to their customers. You can't be doing this. It's a residential neighborhood. You're not out in the middle of nowhere, and it's affecting a lot of people. I'm not speaking just for myself, I'm speaking for half a dozen of my neighbors that are all in agreement with me. So that's my complaint. Hope you can help us out.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. John Engelmeier, 1281 Graham Road. I'm here this evening, and all the congratulations were going on. I'd like to stop and think. I guess of Mr. Laramie, the street supervisor, department head for the City of Florissant that was acknowledged by North County Inc. in handing in hardware, serving 50 years in the City of Florissant. Something that I don't want to overlook. First this evening, I would like to take the opportunity to thank both Mr. Parsons Jr. and Mr. Hammond for running for office. My desire was to see both of them win the election. The first order of business, if elected, was to ask both of you to appoint a charter review committee to address conflict of interest in the city council policy and procedures at meetings, with the sole purpose of reviewing the charter written in 1963 for one person and one person only, James J. Egan. Former mayor, and since that time, two other mayors have used their executive authority to edge the line, not for the betterment of the city, but to impede the progress and the growth of my city. Next item, I want to thank Mr. Keith Shuldoff for the quick and immediate response to my inquiry about Graham Road and St. Ferdinand roadway, the erosion of the curb and the pavement. While on the topic of Ward five, the street known as Claire has two signs restricting traffic during certain hours. One sign on Florissant Road, southbound, and the other sign, Dunn Road, eastbound. I've attempted to address this issue before the Traffic Commission, but I went alone without the support of my city council representative, Jackie Begano, Ward seven. Again, on the topic of Jackie Begano, council member Ward seven, president of the city council, failed to acknowledge citizens attending your work session last week, April 17th. Citizens who take the time out to attend should be given at least the respect of their attendance and not just a hello. If any of one choose not to serve the city, please resign and allow others who desire to make a difference in our government, do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Name is Robert Smith, 2823 Chapelview Drive, Ward four. I have a question about, a couple of years ago, you passed Proposition S for the streets. And I've not heard anything about the streets, the schedule, or when they plan to start fixing the streets with this new money that came into the City of Florissant. I'm curious about that because I've noticed all the roads that I seem to be driving on in Florissant, they are getting worse, and I can't keep afford to get alignments on my car when you hit these potholes or the streets are crumbling apart. So does anyone have any information, or could they get us some information about when they will start, where they will start, and how much money has actually gone in?
It's in the Focus that you just got.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I brought it up because I, like I said, I hadn't seen anything, and I definitely haven't seen the streets getting repaired.
Right. And I would like to suspend the rules because Mr. Egan would like to comment on this.
Do whatever you want.
I'm doing it for you, Mr. Egan. That's all you like.
All right. Well, I will second your motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor.
Aye. Sir, if you go up to Keven tomorrow morning, the intersection of Paul and Keven in my ward, you'll see that we have a couple of signs already in place, and they're already starting significant major roadwork on Keven. They've already dug curbs and poured 90% of the curbs from Rosetta all the way up to Paul and Keven, and that's one of the first projects from Prop S, so.
Okay. Now, is there a schedule?
I beg pardon?
Is there a schedule that's going to show what streets are?
If you check the Focus magazine that's coming out, and if you need one, I think I got one here. Please, I got one right here. I got a Focus. There you go. It's in here.
Thank you. And is there a place in the budget that shows how much has gone into this new street department too, that's in here?
I don't know. Is it in the Focus? Did I have it read?
You can see Mr. Gerald's.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. So we move to public hearings. Public hearing number 1704012.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 405135 of the Florissant City Code, zoning ordinance as amended. A public hearing will be held by the city council of the City of Florissant in St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55, through San Francois on Monday, April 24, 2017, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition. To issue an amendment to B5, ordinance number 7998, to allow for the ice machine kiosk and a parking lot for the property located at 3524 Patterson Road. Citizens will have, and parties with interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing by calling, and anyone with special needs to contact the city clerk by calling, at least five days before said public hearing, by calling 839-5676302298. I've had too much to read.
There you go. Yes, you have. Is the petitioner present? Would you like to come up? Thank you, sir. That's not going to fit up there, is it?
No. Do you have a small one?
Do you have a smaller version?
Yeah.
Oh, so you want to put it on the projector, please?
Sure.
You'll need to flip the switch on. It's on the top left.
That's really going to be too big.
And just face it towards you when you're up there, and then that will show.
Yeah, I think I've got too big a one anyway.
Yeah, I think I've got too big a one anyways. It might not work, so.
Do you have an extra one of these that maybe we could put up there?
Sure.
Okay.
I think I might have.
Or is it? Yeah. Yeah, face it towards, there you go. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you rather that or the site plan?
We'll do, we'll do both. You want to do one at a time?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead. You may need to take out the mic though if you're gonna be pointing to the picture.
Thank you very much. My name's Tim O'Toole and I'm an appointed authorized agent for Roy Williams with Family Video. And I'm here to request an amendment to B5 ordinance for us to install an ice machine kiosk vending machine.
You want to put the site plan on and just tell us where everyone, where it's gonna be at, what it does, and what we're looking at?
So you can see right here that here's Patterson. And the ice machine is here with our video store on the Marcos Pizza here. So we're looking at putting it right there. And basically the machine will be, I think a dollar twenty-five for 10 pounds of ice. And it's gonna have reverse osmosis trip, you know, filtered water. I think it's five cents for 20 ounces and 25 cents for a gallon. And everybody that I've heard has said it's delicious, so I'm excited about that myself, but.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, welcome. I got a few questions about this, the machine. I have used these machines in several different other cities. You know, a lot of, they're around in a lot of smaller municipalities, smaller cities. Very few around here. And question I have is, who's gonna maintain it? Who's gonna keep it clean? Is there possible mold being generated in it from the heat? Cash or is it gonna be card only?
Great questions. As far as who's gonna be maintaining it, we are the same company as Family Video, so we own, will be owning this and have onsite management with both Family Video and Marcos Pizza. Our store managers at all locations, this one and our other location here in town, will be trained on how to maintain the unit. If anything goes wrong, can be there at a moment's notice. The unit itself is all self-maintained and self-contained. There's access channels for us to get in there and that's our job to keep that clean. And we do have gone through the county health department to make sure that we've, you know, dot our i's and cross our t's there too.
Now, is this gonna be hooked up to the existing water line?
Yes.
Okay. And everything that, like the osmosis or?
Yep.
Everything is done inside the machine itself, correct?
Yes, correct.
Now, will they be block ice also or is it just?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
It's just bag ice and no block ice?
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I think this would be great. I mean, this would be, be something that Florissant don't have now and there's not too many of them around. I know on the pamphlet you gave us, the price on here, is that the price you're gonna charge?
Will actually be a little cheaper.
Actually a little bit cheaper?
Yep.
Okay. Well, that'd be great. 16 pounds bag of ice for, it says a dollar seventy-five. That's a bargain right there.
I think it's about a dollar twenty-five, I think is what we're looking at.
Okay.
So. And I know the other handout that I handed you in the planning and zoning meeting, we were asked about how loud the unit is. Just, you know, with some, you know, being conscious of that being in the community. And the other pamphlets are actually from Ice House America, who we get the units from, brand new and shipped to us. They did some testing in their facilities and found out that at 10 feet at peak operation, it's gonna sound a lot like an air conditioning unit on the side of a house, so.
Now, I'm sorry, did you, money-wise, did you say cash and cards?
I'm sorry. Yes, it'll be, I think we're just doing coin, cash and card. Yeah, for us it will be. Yep.
Any kind of security you're gonna have on that, on the actual machine itself?
Yes, we will. Yes, there'll be, it's actually pretty neat. We can run it basically from my cellphone. I'll be able to see what's inside and outside of the unit. And I think there will be alarms if somebody tries to tamper with it.
Now, this would be a 24-hour operation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, one of the questions you kind of answered. Do we have any of these in St. Louis elsewhere?
There's one off of Manchester Road, way out on Manchester, like in the municipality as well. There's a gun shop out there. I'm sorry, I don't know the name of the facility.
Well, how was that? Have you had any problems or issues out there?
Not, not that we've heard of. And that's also, this is a franchise opportunity, so this will be the first one of ours in the state. But we have put in 13 across the country and we've kind of gone through some wrinkles in those. And so we've got a pretty good ironed-out plan of what we're doing with these.
So I see here there's like four tubes underneath it. There won't be no tires on it?
No, there'll be ballards that'll be around it. And it'll be, actually be mounted into the parking lot, so it can withstand up to 170 mile an hour winds.
Will, will that bottom be skirted?
Yes.
So that, what we're seeing right here with no skirt is not?
Yeah, that's not accurate.
Okay. So that'll cover the water line electric?
Yep.
The whole bit and your four little feet that it's sitting on, on the parking lot, correct?
Yep.
And now will that be bolted to the, or concreted in or whatever? So I mean, it's?
Yeah, it's gonna be, I know it's bolted to secure.
Just somewhat, you know, cars can't go hook up to it or?
Yeah, no.
Anything else?
I would hope, yes. We will do a much better job.
So there will be a skirt around it then?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you. Most of my questions have been answered. What is the approximate size of this?
It's about 16 feet long by 80 inches.
And it obviously runs 24 hours a day?
Yes, sir.
And can you explain this reverse osmosis?
Thanks for backing up.
Because I think that's kind of a scam. I'm gonna go on on record.
Yeah.
That you probably can't explain a reverse.
I will as soon as you put them in.
Well, good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Childress?
Thank you, Madam President. The lights, I just want to be sure they're in the roof of the kiosk. Is that correct?
Yes, there's can lights in the roof, so that way it's accessible 24 hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. O'Toole, congratulations. You get to be my first question ever.
Great, thank you.
Sitting up here. Okay. But I just have a question about the parking issue. I was reading through some of the documents and that lot requires 58 spaces. And it's my understanding that when this is placed on your lot, it's gonna take up, what, about three spaces?
About two and a half, but yeah, three.
Okay. Now, when people actually use the machines, isn't it like one additional space gonna need to be cleared so people can go back and forth to the machine?
That was the idea. And you'll see in the larger layout here, we actually did two that are right in the front of accessibility for it. But talking with Phil, with every requirement that we have for our building size, the parking lot itself still maintains the required number of spaces.
Okay. But effectively, it's probably gonna use like four spaces and, right?
I hope so.
Okay.
It's that busy.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Mr. Lee? Before we close this public hearing, is there any, oh, just nuck it in on there. Mr. Jones?
Might be a dumb question, but this thing's gonna run in winter time too, right?
Yes.
So it's?
So one of the?
Summer, spring?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, now, before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? You do have someone coming behind you that you're gonna need to give them the mic.
Good evening. My name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane. My question is, are we gonna have ballards around these, around the machine to keep people from plowing into it and?
I believe he said, yes, there will be ballards.
How, I mean, where are they gonna be located? They're just gonna be on the corners or the sides or what? It would seem to me like, I don't exactly know where. It's gotta be located on the end by the pizza place, by Marcos? Okay. So I would recommend that they use, they have enough, you know, the ballards in the right place. Because, I mean, having one or two on the front or whatever doesn't, I think it should be covered, okay? That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Mark Schmidt, 1065 St. Anthony. I have one question and a concern. My first question is, this is a turnkey operation. Ice is made inside, bagged, so there are no trucks with deliveries. Ice is all made there, bagged there, and then my concern is with the maintenance of this machine. When you said your managers are going to maintain it, I'm a pipe fitter, have been dealing with ice machines in my early part of my career when I was a service fitter. And there's a lot of maintenance that goes into ice machines. And I'm just afraid that a manager who runs a video store may not be qualified to continually clean that machine and it can be maintained in a way that we won't have problems with it. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a great point. Actually, one of the reasons we're excited about getting into this is in addition to one of our businesses, is we've been assured and reassured with, you know, potential people out there that are doing this, that it is easy to maintain. However, we still have the resources that we can easily call on if something does happen. I've already given, been given three numbers with gentlemen that I've reached at any hour that can help with any situation that arises with these units. And we don't even have it on the ground yet. So, yes, it'll, it'll be a challenge, but one that we're looking forward to.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no further comments. Oh, you've gotta quit doing this, Jimmy.
I'm not sure. Do you know if St. Louis County Health takes a look at this product?
Yes, we've already visited. We're looking at a couple of other locations in St. Louis County as well. And at this time, they didn't have any regulations for it.
Okay, I'll continue to monitor that.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, Mr. Caputa moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Sayem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This public hearing is now closed. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business. First item under new business is board appointments. All right. It doesn't look like there are any tonight. So the next will be request. Councilman Egan moves to approve the request to keep three hens for Laura Zito located at 1390 Tahoe Drive, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. Egan?
I was just going to make that motion, ma'am. I did go visit the coop today and it appears to be in line with every other chicken in Ward Three.
All right, thank you. The motion is carried. Bills for first reading. Bill number 9276.
Ordinance to authorize an amendment to B5 ordinance number 7998 to allow for an ice machine kiosk in the parking lot for the property located at 3524 Patterson Road.
Bill number 9277.
Ordinance amending Chapter 125056, wage increase and schedule by amending subsection A, jobs, job classification and grade level by changing the grade level for the court clerk from eight to nine.
Mr. Lee?
Move for a second for the purpose of discussion.
Seconded by Mr. Childress. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'd move to suspend the rules and ask Judge Boyle to come forward.
Seconded by Mr. Childress. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Judge? Good evening.
Good evening. City Council, Mayor, thank you for the courtesy extended to me this evening to address the proposed bill before you regarding the compensation of municipal court clerk. On March 27th, we discussed the current compensation for the municipal court position, clerk position. I presented you with information regarding what other municipalities in St. Louis County and St. Charles are presently paying this position. I reiterated to you that the Florissant Municipal Court, by number of cases filed, closed, and processed, is the largest single municipal court in St. Louis County. My concerns regarding the compensation of the position, this position, is that it currently sits below what is a market level. And that in order to attract and retain a person for this position, the salary should be addressed. As I closed that meeting with you all, I said, I'm here advocating for a grade increase. However, it is up to you, the council, to decide what works best to the city budget. What has changed since our last discussion is that our long-serving municipal court has decided to move up her retirement date. I want to thank her for her years of loyal service to the city, for the job that she has done well and she has worked very hard at. However, starting this next Monday, the city of Florissant does not have a municipal court clerk. Because of this change, I have had to move forward with scheduling interviews, trying to see what the candidates currently we have possess. These interviews will take place next week. I would like to make a special request to this council this evening, that when I meet with these candidates, that it will know whether or not an increase has been authorized or not. So I'm making a special request that three readings be done this evening regarding this matter, and so that there is a clear resolution of whether it has been approved or not. The municipal court clerk plays a vital role in the city. We have, municipal courts have been under close scrutiny. We all have a vested interest in making sure that the person who fills this role is qualified and will be with the city for years to come. So I'm asking for your support of this bill and for its passage. Thank you.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, Judge, is the resumes that you've been getting, are they qualified? Do you have, are you narrowing it down to a couple people, several, one?
Without getting too much into resumes and personal matters, what I'll say is we've received a number of resumes. We've tried to sort it down to people that we at least want to talk to and see what, if any of these folks will have the best qualifications to serve in this role. If I can find others, I certainly will. I mean, the position is still open. We're trying to fill it. But if, that's about what I think I can probably say.
Have these, have these individuals came from all over the metropolitan area or are they just?
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
So they, they already, what you put out there, they have came and they know what the salary is and everything as of right now, correct?
They do.
And that's what they're based on and?
They do.
Okay. So that's what they're wanting, their job is what you have out there now, correct?
That is the job they've applied for. As I said earlier though, my concern is retention, quite frankly. This is the busiest court. And somebody could be here easily, as I said, for three years and go someplace else, much smaller, and make significantly more money. And then we're in the same position we are now. At one time, I had the luxury of thinking I had until July to find somebody, but I do not. So I need to move forward with the people who are here. Hopefully, maybe others will apply and maybe we'll get an outstanding candidate. Right now, I've just gotta look at what we've got and try and.
So you think this jumping up from an eight to a nine will help you retain this individual for a long period of time?
It will at least bring it closer to market, yes. As I presented to you last month. As I presented to you last month, this, as it sits right now, as its base level, even going up to its top level, it's below what any of the other municipalities I showed you were. And so, that's my concern, is that as it sits right now, even going to the top end of that pay grade, they can easily go somewhere else, do a lot less work, for a lot more money.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you. Can you give me a ballpark figure of how many applicants that you have that you are going to interview?
This time, we've set seven interviews.
And those, and I think you just commented, those seven people are all believing that this is a way, a level eight position, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Childress. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance amending Chapter 125056, wage increase and schedule by amending subsection A, job classification and grade level by changing the grade level for the court clerk from eight to nine.
Move for a third?
Councilman Lee moves for a third. Seconded by Mr. Childress. Roll call, please.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt? Oh, sorry. I gotta change my thingies over here. Parsons?
I understand.
Sayam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
No.
Caputa?
No.
Motion fails.
The motion fails.
Thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, motion for the third reading failed. I would like to ask to postpone this bill until the May 22nd meeting for the final reading and vote.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
The second meeting, May?
May.
22nd.
22nd, is it?
I think it is. Second meeting.
Is it 22nd, May 22nd?
Okay.
Bill number 9284.
78.
Oh, pardon me. 9278.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $4,000 from account number 0339, ice and snow removal to account number 0334, street markings to replace 134 banners on North Lindbergh and North Highway 67 with new banners.
All right. I would like to make a motion to move the May 8th meeting to Tuesday, May 9th, due to a conflict with the Valley of Flowers Queen's Dinner. That is seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is council announcements. Mr. Hanke?
Yes, thank you. Two things, I'm just gonna say one more time before the Valley of Flowers is getting here. Valley of Flowers is less than two weeks away. I'd like to get everybody to pay a little attention. Let's clean up, spruce up, cut the grass, get rid of some weeds, do a little painting if it's needed. I like to liken it to a party. If you're gonna have friends over, you're gonna have a party at your house, it usually makes you look at things, and you clean up some things or maybe do some things to get ready for it. Well, folks, we're gonna have a party, and we're gonna have a lot of guests. So, I'm hoping we can get people to clean up and spruce up, and it's spring, let's make it look nice. Second item I want to talk about is the letter carriers, which is your city letter carriers here in Florissant, all over the Florissant delivery area, well, actually, all over the country. This is a national food drive on May the 13th. It's the 25th annual Letter Carriers Food Drive, which is the largest one-day food drive in the country. It's May the 13th, you just put out non-perishable food in a bag at your, right at your mailbox for the letter carrier to pick up, and I'd like to see that be a big success. Once again, that's May 13th, which is the Saturday after the Valley of Flowers. Please do something for, oh, and by the way, Timmy always puts a shout-out to team. All the food collected in the Florissant delivery area goes to our team food pantry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'd like to remind everybody to please take it easy on the gas pedal on Hutter Shell there, you guys. We still got a little bit ways to go, and it looks like you're finishing up one side of it. We still gotta move to the other side. So, I know it gets out of hand down there sometimes, we get plugged up with traffic. Please be patient, be careful for those construction workers and yourself and your cars. I'd also like to give my big shout-out to team, like I always do. If anybody's got some extra canned goods, some change, run it down to team, it's our food pantry, they're always looking for people to volunteer down there, too. So, if you guys want to get out of the house, go down there and spend a couple hours. You really get to see the whole picture, how team works, see the people coming in. Like I said, there's always people hungry morning, noon, and night, and everybody's had their downtimes in their life as far as employment. My, myself, working out of a union hall, I've been up and down, and I'm not bashful to say that. Other things I'd like to bring up, I'd like to wish Mark the best, pleasure serving with you. Robert, I'd like to welcome you aboard. I think all of us will be here for you, need anything, reach out, give us a call or something like that. We're all on a pretty heavy team here as far as getting things done. And like, I'm sure you figured out, we don't always agree all the time, but we do make this city move. We've got a lot of things done in this past, and we plan on moving forward with you onboard. Besides that, I'd like to also let my residents know in Ward 2, thank you very much for looking out for me. I work very hard out there for you guys. Thanks for giving me your vote of confidence. I'd also like to say that the speeders on Lindsey Lane will be getting a wake-up call, and especially the ones on Patterson Road, too. So, you guys better slow down because you're gonna get a big fat ticket. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Madam President. The Maryland Heights Police Officers Association annual golf outing to benefit Rankin-Jordan Children's Hospital will be June 5th at the Florissant Golf Course. We've signed a corporate sponsor, 971 Radio, one of the talk radio stations, and they'll have several of their personalities golfing in the event that day. If you want to get involved, see me after the meeting, give me a call. You have a whole sponsorship or a, wanna get a foursome, we do have a few foursomes left. That is all. And welcome aboard, Mr. Parsons.
Thank you. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, Mr. Parsons, congratulations. Looking forward to working with you on the city council. Like Mr. Jones said, you know, if you got any questions or any kind of concerns, give us a call. You know, that's what we're all here for. And also, if you're a firearm owner, make sure you lock your firearms up, don't leave them in your vehicles, make sure they're in your house secured. Another thing, Ward 4 residents and the City of Florissant also residents, make sure you join the Neighborhood Watch program. It is starting to catch on throughout the residents, and it is working. The police have been getting more calls lately, you know, in the past few months than they have in the past. So, we'd like to continue that on in the future. We have some very good ward captains, I have a very good one myself, I know Mr. Jones has a good one. There are several good ones in this city. So, these ward captains, they definitely do their job. So, if you have, if you want to join the Neighborhood Watch program, get ahold of your councilmen or the police department, get ahold of Officer Steven Michaels, and he will, he will gear you into the right direction and get ahold of your ward captains and get signed up for the Neighborhood Watch. Very good program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Childress?
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome, Mr. Parsons, to the council. I look forward to working with you. Your first order of business is the Valley of Flowers weather, that's all yours.
That's right.
The MSD project on Graham Road is about to begin. It will last six weeks. One lane will be closed just as you cross the bridge going into Old Town. Please be patient, this is a replacement of 935 feet of sanitary sewer line going from an eight-inch pipe to a 24-inch pipe, and it will last hopefully six weeks if they don't have any, any problems. And right after that, on May 1st, St. Louis County will begin a concrete replacement project on Washington, long awaited. It will begin at Route St. Pierre and go all the way to Lindbergh. They will replace curbs, sidewalks, and have ADA-accessible work. It will, they will spend over, just over a million dollars, and hopefully, with cooperation from Mother Nature, it will be done in three months. Please be patient, it's a long time in coming, and I'm thankful to St. Louis County for doing that. It is also grass-cutting season, ladies and gentlemen. We all get complaints about sewers backing up. Please do not blow your grass or your clippings into the street, they end up in the sewer, and all nine of us will get calls about standing water in sewers. So, please think about that when you're cutting your grass. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I just want to say thank you to Councilman Mark Schmidt for his 21 years of service of the Florissant community. Anyone who serves for that amount of time definitely has a love for the city and a love for serving his neighbor, and I truly appreciate that. Next, I just want to thank the citizens of Ward Number 8 for electing me to serve in this position. It is truly a privilege and an honor, and I am really grateful to be here today, sitting in this comfortable chair that they have up here. But, you know, I just want to do my best to serve the citizens of Ward 8 and the City of Florissant. And, you know, if anybody needs to contact me, you know, I'm sure I'm gonna get an email here shortly, but just contact me by email or telephone. And I, word8@florissamo.com. Okay, that's it. Word8@florissamo.com. And I will get right back with you and answer any questions and be available to all the citizens here. Thank you.
I'll say, Mr. Parsons, that chair is not always comfortable.
Yes, I would also, I'd like to congratulate you, too, Mr. Parsons, and I'm looking forward
to working with you. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Robinwood Elementary School. I had the pleasure of being with them at their Spring Festival on Saturday for the whole afternoon. Got many members signed up for Neighborhood Watch and got to see a lot of residents, and Eddie was the highlight again. So, I want to thank them. And Mr. Engelmeier, if you do not mind staying after the meeting, I'd like to talk to you for a minute, and I will move to Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Shuldorff said about the weather, you know, for the Valley of Flowers. When I was first elected, I was in charge of the weather. It didn't go very well. You know, it rained that whole weekend, but, you know, I'm a Marine, we don't care what kind of weather it is, you know? But I know you were in the Navy, so there, that's, I know you guys like it good, you know, want it perfect, but it's good to have another veteran on the city council, and thank you for your service as a Navy CB. CBs are dear to my heart, also. My father was a CB during World War II, and there, there's only one other Navy personnel that's close to a Marine, and that's a corpsman. And a CB is basically, they would, my father was attached to a Marine unit during World War II, so that was before they had combat engineers and everything, and they did it all. But it's good, good to have another veteran on the council. Thank you.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, my question is, Mr. Schmidt, did you have a comfortable chair? Is that why you? Because I don't know, ours aren't that comfortable.
Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I, too, I'd like to congratulate Mark Schmidt and Robert Parsons for running one of the cleanest, most honorable campaigns in maybe in recent history. It was very refreshing because your campaign was free of mudslinging, it was free of any vitriolic rhetoric, very sportsmanlike, and I want to commend both of you for that. In regards to, I think Mr. Caputa kinda stole my thunder here, but I was gonna say that I'm glad that Robert is a CB, can do, and I think the weather would be a lot better than it was when we had a Marine as the newest council member. We, I got invited to get some input to Bi-State development on, you know, the recent problems that they've had with security. And so, I wrote them a three-paragraph letter. I'm just gonna read the one paragraph here, that it's incumbent on the county executive and the mayor of St. Louis to seek assistance from the members of the municipal league of Metro St. Louis and the many stakeholder organizations who have always played a role in civic progress in the metro area. The passage of Proposition P demonstrated the support of the people of St. Louis County for public safety and the solid support for the City of St. Louis. First female mayor has bolstered the optimism of citizens in the City of St. Louis for a safe place to live and work. So, I offered any assistance that we could give to Bi-State. I know their director, John Nations, quite well, he used to be the mayor of Chesterfield, and I'll monitor this situation. I'm very keen on the county and the city getting this right. Evidently, St. Clair County does get it right, and we need the St. Louis County and the City of St. Louis to provide safety for the metro link, otherwise, the rails are gonna become obsolete like the old streetcar lines, and the new trolley in Delmar Loop will be antiquated before it even gets started. So, we've gotta get that right. Speaking of CBs, Robert, I went to the ceremony at the History Museum last Tuesday, right after I went to the inauguration of Mayor Lyda Krusen, a historic moment in the City of St. Louis with their first female mayor. Right after that, I went to the History Museum for a commemoration to Admiral Ben Mariele. He was the founder of the Navy CBs in 1942, and so they're, you know, 50, 50, 75 years old this year, just passed March 5th. There's gonna be, it just so happens that Ben Mariele, he actually wasn't born here, but he grew up in St. Louis and lived here and worked here and went to Washington University. So, he's a St. Louisan through and through, and that's why they chose St. Louis to honor the founder of the CBs. And there's gonna be a very, very handsome plaque commemorating Admiral Ben Mariele's service at the Soldiers Memorial when it gets completed. They had an unveiling of the plaque at the History Museum, and it'll be installed during the renovation of the Soldiers Memorial. Last Saturday was kind of busy day here in Florissant. We had a document shredding day, which was very popular, it was very fast. Saw Mr. Caputa there getting rid of our tax documents from the year before. And we also had the reopening of Burger King, they renovated that Burger King in record time. They really appreciate the support that the city council gave them to get them under their deadline for their tax exchange. They wrote their last check on the last day. The work wasn't quite done, but they kind of prepaid it so they could get the tax exchange. And I'm glad that they did that investing in the City of Florissant. Another event Saturday was a, you know, we have a lot of charity fundraising golf tournaments at our golf course, but we've been keen to get a individual tournament where individuals compete with their own ball. We had the Golf Week Amateur Tour play at Florissant Golf Club, and Florissant Golf Club now joins the prestigious ranks of Ann Breyer, Persimmon Woods, Gateway National, Norwood Hills Country Club, and Old Kinderhook as one of the venues on this prestigious amateur tour. We had players of all skill levels play in this tour, there's five different flights. The best score that was posted was two, it was three over par 75, and this is the highest, lowest score that there's been in this tour, so we have a very challenging golf course there. And also, this Saturday, Florissant residents can play our golf course. If you show your resident card for $14, this is part of our celebration of the 20th anniversary of the, of us purchasing the golf course. Florissant Rotary and Sacred Heart teamed up for a trivia night last Saturday night for the team food pantry, and I'm sure that was very successful. Sunday, we had an event that kind of demonstrates the diversity of culture that we have here in Florissant, some people might not be aware of it, but Ward 2 in... Some people might not be aware of it, but Ward Two in Florence on Lindsay Lane is the home of, and I can't hardly pronounce this word. Can you pronounce it, Tim? It's the Wat Phrasirataynatarium. It's a Buddhist meditation temple. It's the, it's the headquarters for Missouri and Southern Illinois. And at the festival, which was very well-attended, there was lots and lots of people there, I was presented a commemorative two-book set that commemorates the friendship between Thailand and the United States. This book is called The Eagle and the Elephant. And President Andrew Jackson sent this gold sword to the king of Siam back in eighteen thirty-three, and there's been a friendship ever since. The only blemish was during World War Two, we decided that we didn't have the resources to save Thailand, and we, and Thailand told us that if we didn't prevent an invasion, that they weren't gonna be able to do anything afterwards. And they were forced to declare war on the United States, but we never recognized that declaration. So we've had great relationships with the independent country of Thailand for a hundred and eighty years. This is a country that was independent when all the countries surrounding it in the Southeast Asia were part of the colonial Europe. They were independent and we had a good, and they even had a soldier travel all the way from Siam at the time to fight for the Union in the Civil War, and it's in this book So I was able to meet the Royal Counsel General, who was here from Chicago, another name I might not get right, is Saksi Fromayathie. That kind of makes me glad I'm not from Thailand, because I don't know if I could pronounce all these words. I also, you know, we have a community that was founded by Roman Catholics, the French Roman Catholics founded this community. We have very deep Catholic roots, and it, because of that, I asked for an audience with Archbishop Carlson. I met with him not last week, but the week before. We had a very, very good meeting, and we talked about the importance of Catholic parochial education, and he promised to work with me on some initiatives to make sure that Catholic education is here for a long, long time. We are gonna have that Florence Garage Sale on April twenty-ninth. You can sign it, well, sign up is up until, well, it's too late to sign up for it, but anyway, if you want to go to the garage sale, it's gonna be August twenty-ninth at the Ice Rink. The Valley of Flowers is coming, May fifth, sixth, and seventh. Mr. Parsons is in charge of the weather. And we got Pitch, Hit, and Run coming to Coke Field, number four, on Thursday, May fourth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next meeting of the Florence City Council will be on Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand and seventeen. Councilman Parsons moves to adjourn. Seconded by Councilman Siam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.